I'd like to call the meeting order. Mrs. Burns, roll call please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Parentino?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman is absent with prior notice. Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mrs. Hellenbeck?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Present.
Mr. Merrington?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board met in an executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters related to litigation and matters related to school safety and security. The district mission statement: "Neshamonee community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner." Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. With our public work session meeting each month, we introduce new artwork, and so this month is Pecession Middle School Student Artwork. We thank Ms. Lozus, Ms. Stork, and Ms. Goodheart Roof for providing us great samples of student work, both two-dimensional and three-dimensional this time around, and so please take some time, if you do have opportunity at the end of the meeting, to take a look at the wonderful talent of our students and our teachers. I would like to point out that we have our enrollment report always attached this time of the month to the superintendent's report. Gives you a sense of the number of students in the district, just a little over 9,000 students who are responsible for here in the public school experience, and then we also transport our private school students as well. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, a reminder in the bulletin thanking our teachers for all the good work that they do to touch student lives in so many different ways, both academically as well as socially emotionally. We do give out, we build future awards each month. I'd like to compliment and congratulate, actually, the involvement of Officer Robison for the Middletown Township Police Department. We were able to recognize her at Schweitzer Elementary School on the school-wide assembly program, which was really nice and a great opportunity to thank her for the good work that she's doing, as well as the cafeteria food services staff, Ms. Karen, Ms. Denise, Ms. Christine, and Ms. Jaclyn, all at Tewanka Elementary School. They do a great job. Students are well taken care of, both emotionally and nutritionally there at the Tewanka School. Many of you will be interested to know that there is a draft of the 2021, the 2020-21 school calendar, next year's calendar, attached to this agenda. It'll be acted on by the Board next meeting at the 26th, and so you'll be able to start to schedule around for the next school year. Sandberg Elementary School is at it again with No Shave November. The gentlemen there are in their third annual event in an effort to raise money for St. Jude's Children's Hospital. It's a nice event, and we have one representative here in the audience. Senior Citizen Tax Relief Program will be out in January, just giving a heads-up and notice in the report that those who have household incomes of less than $25,000 will qualify for tax relief of up to $650 for senior citizens who reside in our school district. If you need more information, you can reach out to the Neshamonee Business Office directly. Those who've participated in the program in the past will be contacted, should be contacted by the school district directly. Congratulations to teacher Colleen Picano at the Hoover Elementary School. She had a chance to kiss a pig, and that was thanks to a fundraising effort. Over $35,000 was raised for area schools, and Hoover was able to participate and get some of that grant money for the work that's happening there. Good work and good effort on the part of the Hoover community. We congratulate 151 senior high school students who were inducted into the National Honor Society back on October 26th. There's a list that was attached to the report. Our Interact Club at the high school sponsors a number of events, most recently a movie night, Pixar film Coco, and all of this is in an effort to raise money for the Sunshine Foundation and the program that they've participated in the last couple of years where they send a child and a family on a trip to Disney. And so it's a nice local effort with a local foundation, and our students work very hard on that front as well. And then finally, just some thanks and some recognition for our fall sports programs that did some nice work this past fall, and believe it or not, well, maybe you believe it with today's weather, we are into the winter season already. So congratulations and thank you. That's all I have. Oh, and High School Band, for sure. Great programs this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. This month, there's reports on Board docs from Paul May, the Assistant to the Superintendent Director of Administration, the semi-annual reports there, if anyone wants to take a look at it. That brings us to the presentation portion of our meeting, and I'll turn it back to Mr. Jones.
Last year, we had all six of our elementary schools come out during the course of the 2018-19 school year, and so this year, this is the first school to come out. It's all of our secondary schools. So we'll have four school presentations this year. It's a great chance for the Board to have an opportunity to hear directly from our school personnel, as well as our students, who get to come out and present something of interest to that school. And with us to start is Principal Kelly.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dawn Kelly. I'm the principal at Carl Sandberg, and I am joined by my assistant principal, Mr. Derek Albrand. We have, we want to talk to you tonight a little bit, very short presentation on how we utilize Canvas at our building. We've been very, very successful with it, so I want to talk to you about how it affects us from our perspective as administrators. We have teacher perspective, we have a parent perspective, and we have seven students with us as well. So we're going to do this very quick, really short. Come on up, Mr. Albrand. All right. So we have a presentation right behind you and for everybody to see. So basically Canvas, and this is for everyone who doesn't know what it is, it's a cloud-based learning management system. All of our area colleges are using it, many colleges are using it. It helps us access so many different things that we're going to show you tonight and make learning and materials easier to find. So what is it that it's on the cloud? What does that mean? So basically, it just means that they can access all of their materials from any internet-connected device. So they can use their phone, they can use their Chromebooks, they can use their desktop at home, laptops, anything that accesses the internet can access Canvas. So what can they get to? And the kids are going to show this to you a little bit close up in a little bit, but they can get their calendar, their notes, their quizzes, their discussion boards, pretty much anything that we can do, we can do through Canvas. So how does it help me as a parent? Basically, it gives us the no-excuse zone, right? So I left my worksheet at school. Well, it's on your Canvas. I didn't know there was a test. Well, yeah, it's on your Canvas. We never learned this. Well, it says that you did yesterday on your Canvas. I was absent that day, but you could have checked your Canvas. So basically, it's a no-excuse zone. You get it, which as a parent is awesome for me, and we'll talk, we'll hear from a parent as well. If you can't find your notebook, everything is there, and you're going to get to see that up close in just a second. So how does it all work? Easy. You just, as a parent, have to say, "Did you check your Canvas on your Chromebook today?" That's all you need to do. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Albrand.
And real simply, what happens as you go ahead and you click on a particular, you could click on a particular class, like when you look at the calendar, you see there's a class that's circled. You click on that, and you'll get three key pieces of information. You're going to get the big idea of what the lesson was, you're going to get the task or the activity, and you're going to get the homework or practice. So big idea, task, activity, homework, practice. Now, our teachers are expanding on this, and they're putting other things in there. You may find your smart notes that come off of a SMARTboard that, from that specific lesson that day. And you also may find a video, maybe it attaches to a Khan Academy-type video, which will show you how to do it. So if you're out on that given day, you have a real good understanding of what happened. And as a parent, it works out great as well, because as a parent, if you go and look, you can download the Canvas parent app, you could look on that specific day, you could click on that subject area again, geometry here in this case, and you will see that big idea, the activity or task, and again, that homework or practice that's there. It'll also, again, show you that there are notes and a video that you can get to, to help your child be successful in their learning. From here, I'd like to turn it over to one of our teachers. Ms. Douglas teaches sixth and seventh grade social studies, and she's going to give you a little bit of a perspective on what happens from the teaching angle.
Thank you. Hello. On top of talking about just how it's great for organization, I wanted to talk about how I use it for assessing my students. It's really great for both formative and summative assessments, so I'm going to have some screenshots up there. One of the really cool things Canvas has is discussion boards. So students are able to post an answer to a discussion board topic. I like to use these to check in and make sure students understood a topic we did. So it might be like, instead of a ticket out the door, I have them answer a discussion board post. And you can see this one I use in my Egypt unit. They have to use certain vocabulary to show me that they understood the topic. And then as we get later in the year, I like to do things where I ask them to respond to a classmate, and they're kind of engaging in academic dialogue. And it's really funny when you see like sixth graders going, "I would like to respectfully disagree," and they kind of engage with one another. It's really cool just to get them used to having that academic dialogue, but digitally versus just verbally in the classroom, because some students, they don't like to raise their hand, they don't like to talk out loud, so everyone gets engaged, everyone participates when they get to do it digitally. So I really like that with the discussion board posts. The other thing I love is I can do all of my tests on Canvas. If I do any multiple choice, matching, short-answer type questions, it grades it for me, and then I just have to hand-grade any short-answer questions. So when I'm grading, this is the screen that I see. I can see the average score, I can see how many students I've graded, and when I'm done, I can hit this awesome button, it's called Quiz Statistics, and that'll give me more specific feedback about the test. So this is one I gave a couple weeks, or two weeks, last week, actually, in seventh grade. I can see that my average score on the test was a 90%. My highest score was 100%, and then I got to the lowest scores, I was actually making this presentation, and I went, "Ooh, 44%. I got to check in and see who this student is so I can, you know, do remediation, we can do second chance learning." As it turned out, I forgot to grade that one, so that actually wasn't my lowest score, but I saw that, which was so great, I was able to go back and fix that, make sure I graded it, and that changed my average up to a 92. I can see how long the average student took to take the test, about 22 minutes, so that kind of helps me plan for next year when I'm planning out my schedule. And then I can also see how students did on every individual question. So here's one question I had about the political result of the Fall of Rome. I can see 87% of students got it right. If I clicked on the number, I could actually see which students got it right or wrong or put each answer. So I like that. Obviously, this question students did well on, so I can just check in with those few. But here's one from a sixth grade test I gave a couple weeks ago. It was a skills-based question, reading a timeline, and I can see that students obviously struggled with this one. So we could go back and we could talk about timeline skills and make sure I'm hitting that in the future in my classroom. So just super helpful, giving me very specific data to help my students be successful. One other thing I do want to talk about, I direct the musical at Sandberg, so I love that we can make Canvas pages for our activities. So this is what my homepage looks like for our musical. I can put choreography videos up there, which we typically, we couldn't post on the actual website. So Canvas is great, it's only the students in the musical can view that and see our choreography, they can practice at home. I can put up all the music, so they can practice singing, as well as, you know, specific cast lists that have student names and costume information. So it's even really great for extra curriculars, they can see the schedule and everything on their calendar. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We use that for a lot of different sports teams also use Canvas as well. So now I'd like to bring up one of our parents, and at the same time, if the students would just go around to where you're going to be placed, they're going to come next to board members so that they can actually show you their device. So go ahead, and I feel like you can't hear me. Oh, there we go. And this is Mrs. Loudon, who thankfully came out tonight to show you a little bit from the parent point of view. So kids, hang on one second. Yep. Okay. And students, hang on one second.
Oh, my goodness, they started jumping right away.
Do you want me to let you go first? We'll let the kids go first, and then we'll let you talk, sorry.
That's not really how I planned it, but there we go. Sorry about that.
They're excited.
Those are good kids.
I would like to brag that these are all students I have taught or in my musical. I was like, when she was like, "Oh, my gosh, we're all coming, listen to this."
It's still a great job.
So you were part of the fifth grade class.
You were probably, so he was the third one.
He was the eighth grade, the eighth graders, this is the first year.
But the rest of the kids, this, I have to say, the eighth year.
You find, does the device matter, or you find that one device is working better?
I definitely think it's a problem.
Thank you, everyone. I hope they were able to answer your questions. Thank you. Lastly, just a quick statement from one of our parents, just to let you know what it looks like from a parent point of view.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Loudon. I'm the parent of Alyssa Loudon, seventh grader at Carl Sandberg. I'm very pleased with our experiences with Canvas over the past two years. This year, all of Alyssa's teachers use Canvas, which is extremely helpful that everything is streamlined. If Alyssa misses class because of a doctor's appointment or a music lesson, Canvas gives her the opportunity to easily see the most up-to-date information on the classwork and homework that she needs to make up. If she's absent from school because of an illness, she can see the whole day's work in the calendar feature. Canvas has made her more independent with keeping track of and submitting her assignments. I'm never asked to check an agenda anymore or to email teachers for her work when she is sick. Canvas is much easier and more thorough than when she had to ask friends to get her work or when she would have to wait until she returned to school. For example, when she was absent in September because of strep throat, she felt well enough to complete all her work in the evening, and when she returned to school the next day, she was already caught up. In Canvas, Alyssa color-coded each subject to help her stay more organized. The app is extremely user-friendly and intuitive. Links are provided by the teachers to download any worksheets at home. Many teachers post days or weeks, or maybe a month in advance, which helps Alyssa plan ahead for her busy week and allows her to look forward to what is coming in the near future. Other benefits of Canvas include taking and submitting tests, checking grades, as well as customizing it to include the activities. She regularly gets Challenge 24 Club meeting updates, information from Ms. Douglas on the musical rehearsal schedule, and links to practice choir music. For all of these reasons and more, Canvas has been an exceptional digital resource for my child's educational journey. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for the Sandberg crowd?
Are all the teachers required to use Canvas? They are. That's a great thing. Yeah. At every building. I know for us, I can always speak for.
I want to know from the students that how they like not having a sick day as a real sick day anymore, so I can see that they're not too happy with that, but.
Or maybe not even a snow day.
Oh, I didn't even think of that.
Right? You can do your work, you can do your work from home, they don't have to make up the day. Thank you for having us here. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a really, it is initially presented to you as a platform that is used on colleges. Colleges have really migrated towards this Canvas platform. Blackboard at one point was pretty popular in the college scene, it still is to some degree, but Canvas has really picked up a lot of momentum, so our students in middle school and then ultimately high school here will be really ready for that experience, this learning management system. And I do thank Principal Kelly and Mr. Albrand as well, because Mr. Albrand is a real big leader of the technology effort there at Sandberg, helping teachers and supporting teachers in many ways. And Ms. Loudon, thank you so much, I thought you gave a really nice parent perspective. Mr. Sullivan, we'd like to present you, students, with a certificate for coming out this evening. It's not easy to be in a public forum like this and then come up and talk to strange adults, but you did a really nice job, at least, you know, our example. Strangers. Listen, I know them better than you, so that's why I said strange adults. All right, hold on, we'll be right in front of you there for a second. Nick Ward. Thank you, Nick. Mark Shaw. Jordan Shaw. Amelia Scheller. Alyssa Loudon. Sienna Kelly. And Laura Kuss. Thank you so much, everybody. Really appreciate you coming out. Do you want to get a picture? Mr. Stanley would like a quick picture. How about you step off here, please? Ms. Douglas, join us, please, everybody. Mr. Stanley does a nice job of advertising and good work that you do. I see him in the background doing one of those photo mamas, right?
Hey, Steve. Thank you, everybody.
This is often what I say, that you might want to get home and check where to continue with the meeting.
Whoa, 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 they got Chromebooks now at Canvas. They don't have to go home early, they can stay.
All right, this brings us to the first public comment period. Mrs. Burns?
No one signed up publicly.
Okay. Is there anyone who wanted to speak who didn't realize they had to sign up or forgot to sign up? Okay, go ahead. You know the drill, name. Push the button.
Andy Warren, Shady Brook Drive. Just a real quick observation based on that last presentation. Before I left, and I'm not sure exactly what this means, other than we're darn lucky here at Neshamonee, before I left tonight, one of the news networks had an expose, if you will, about the Philadelphia School District by teachers. And some of the things they were saying, 30% of the teachers leave every year for fear of what they're doing in the classroom. Forty percent, some 40% that, or higher, of ninth graders are reading on a fourth-grade level. The pencils are used as weapons in the class, I mean, this was what they were reporting. And then I come here, and our students and teachers are intermingling so well, have so much at their fingertips like pre-college. I hope that our students and teachers realize just how fortunate we are in suburban Bucks County as opposed to either teaching or studenting in the Philadelphia School District. Again, I'm not sure exactly what that all means, except we're lucky.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mary Ellen Pulak. I live in the Twin Oaks section of Levittown, and I'm an instructional assistant at Albert Schweitzer Elementary School. I'm going to be attending the faculty meeting tomorrow to find out how well we did in the PSSAs. I saw a little something, and I'm very pleased that we seem to have done well. But I'm here to talk about something that happened on Friday. On Friday, we lost a very good instructional assistant. She had only started in August, but she regretfully left on Friday, not because she didn't like working at our school, but because she's a widow raising a child by herself, and she needs benefits, and she needs to make as much as she can. Pensbury offered her a full-time position and offered her $3 more an hour. She was a great colleague that I worked with. She was wonderful helping me in doing my job, and I think we need to do something to, I know the last meeting I was here, we were talking about how bus drivers aren't staying, and there's a serious issue that we need to address to keep good employees. This woman, I cried because she was such a wonderful addition to our building, and I mean, she didn't want to leave, but for her own financial stability, she had to. So we need to look at that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. I live in the Georgetown section of Langhorne. So today, we had a little issue with the buses, and I know it's an ongoing issue, but my son's bus didn't come until 20 of 9:00. Usually comes at 8:32. And I know it's, like I said, it's an issue, but it's also a safety issue. It's like an inconvenience for most of the parents. Like, I know a lot of parents that work, especially me, I work in a preschool where I can't be late for work because my little 3- and 4-year-olds are counting on me. I feel like we need to have that Next Stop Act. I don't know what happened with it, but it really helped us out a lot last year with knowing the situation. We need better communication with the buses. Like, a lot of us don't know when the buses are coming. We don't know when, what bus the kids are going on. And there was an issue that kids are going on the wrong bus, and I said, "Well, they don't know what bus to go on," because the bus numbers are constantly changing, they're constantly getting substitutes, and we're not getting open communication about it. So I think we need better communication. We could use that app again. It would help us, especially working parents, know what's going on, you know? So that's all I have to say.
What bus number was it, and what school?
Uh, my daughter...
What's your regular bus number?
Well, my daughter is Maple Point Middle School. Her bus number's 54. I have to drive her because she has an injury to her leg, but lately, it's not 54, it's every other bus number, and it sometimes comes 25 minutes late. My son is Pearl Buck Elementary. His bus is 30. I had no idea what... I had to, like, leave him with another parent today because I had to get ready for work, and I says, "Look, can you make sure he gets on the bus safely?" And she said, "Yeah, of course." I said, "I gotta get to work. I mean, I can't be late." So that's one of the issues that we're having. There's just no communication, especially in the mornings. The afternoons are a little bit better, but we need communication in the morning. Thank you.
All right. Items for approval at the public meeting. 2.01 would be Berkheimer confidentiality resolution. 2.02, budget transfers. 2.03, the acceptance of donations. 2.04, overnight trips. 2.05, the first reading of policy 204, 222, and 227. 2.06, the 2021 district school calendar. 2.07, a settlement agreement. 2.08, out-of-district placements. And 2.09, homebound instruction. Brings us to the committee report. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbeck.
Our next business operations meeting is next Thursday, the 21st, right here in this room at 6:30. Thank you.
Educational development, Ms. Boyle.
Yes, our next meeting will be in January, 6:30 here in the boardroom. And, okay, so we also have the policy committee, which is November 19th, and all's welcome, all are welcome. And the IU board is actually going to meet the same night, November 19th, and it's going to be an open house at Samuel Everett.
Thank you. Facilities and planning, there is a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30, is it? 6:30 at Nishamani High School. All are welcome. The Nishamani Education Foundation, Mr. Feather.
The Nishamani Education Foundation held another successful Dining for Dollars fundraiser at Bertucci's on November 4th and 5th. Thank you to all the staff and community members that came out and attended. Raffle tickets for two seats at the Eagles-Cowboys game on December 22nd are on sale for $5 each at each school main office. The drawing will be held on November 22nd, and the proceeds benefit the Nishamani Education Foundation. The 2019-2020 Nishamani Education Foundation classroom grant applications are due tomorrow, November 13th. Winners will be chosen at the next Nishamani Educational Foundation meeting, which will be held at 4:30 PM on Monday, November 18th, at Maple Point Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. PSBA liaison, Mr. Pieratana.
First, PSBA is reminding all school board members, as of, in accordance, excuse me, with Act 18 of 2019, there is now a new and advanced board training that's required. Previously, board members were only required to attend training when they were first elected. Now, as members continuing, there's going to be, I guess you'd call it a refresher course. Please contact the superintendent's office to find out when you're due. It's on a time schedule, and when those courses are available to register for. Other than that, the biggest news out of the PSBA is more movement on the pension crisis, which we all know will never go away. There are three new bills pending in the state legislature that made it out of committee. One is to try and address the consolidation of both the state employees retirement system, which is SEERs, and the public school employment retirement system, which is PERSsers, that we often refer to. They actually had a commission that met by state mandate to come up with some solutions. They feel that they might be as much as $10 billion worth of savings over a 30-year span by applying new actuarial, I guess it would be limits?
Assumptions.
Assumptions, thank you. Assumptions to the plans. Of course, the issue's growing, it's not shrinking. It's estimated now that the total liability today is $75 billion. They believe $60 billion of that is unfunded, which is, you know, a huge issue. And the current breakdown per taxpayer, if all had to be paid out today, would be $17,000, $100 per taxpayer in the state of Pennsylvania to settle all the current pension liabilities that are on the books. This issue's not going to go away, something needs to be done. Whether or not these bills that they're moving forward are the right way to go, only time will tell, but we'll continue to fulfill the obligation that's placed upon the district and upon our taxpayers, and trying to do our best to have it not impact what we're available, what we're able to provide in the classroom. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, technical school?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'm still rolling through the numbers there. Mind-boggling. Yes, the joint board of the technical school, Bucks County Technical School, met October 28th at 7:00 PM. A couple of action items the board took. We finalized the dates for the summer exploratory program for the 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students, July 6th, July 23rd. They get to explore the various programs over the summer, maybe spark an interest, and they can apply when they're of age. Also, we, the board, voted to accept a $25,000 grant that came in under the Safe School Initiative, and we directed our director, Dr. Pesky, to apply for grant money, also for security issues for door locks and cameras. It was an opportunity that came down the way, and we brought it to our attention, and we gave him the go-ahead to ask for it. We discussed the... Yep, I lost my place already. Yes. Yeah, where am I at here? Geez, sorry. Yeah, yes. Oh, under discussion, I'll throw this out here. Dr. Lee, who is our superintendent of record, and is also superintendent of Ben Salem, they've taken some initiative of this. There was a very brief discussion about the later start time for high school students that has made the news and has been floated. That's all it is, just a discussion. Our student reps were stoked about it, the board members, not so much. But I thought I'd mention that we did discuss it. Had an open house, November 7th, just last Thursday, 6 to 8. I went, I attended, I remember going there, and my father taught there. I loved it, and I just thrilled again to walk through the shops and see all the good work that's going on there. And I can tell you that all of Fairless Hills, part of Levittown, came to a traffic hall. All of New Falls was block solid, so I would say the open house was a success. We were overflow parking over in the Egan parking lot, and the hallways were packed, so I was thrilled to see that. There will be a financial aid night, November 14th. That's, I believe that's this week, right? Thursday. 6 to 7:30. There will be representatives, some of the community college, and somebody from the state, who will be offering parents and guardians some directions for financial aid for post-secondary education. That'll be available, it's open to parents and guardians. The community, I'll mention. Carpentry class, you may have seen, the community-based project they did at Silver Lake Nature Center, Build a Pergola picnic area. They posted up on Facebook, it's also on the Bucks County Technical High School's page. Beautiful work by the carpentry students. And the landscapes and horticultural class, design installed and will maintain turf and landscaping at the New Falls Dental Clinic on New Falls Road. Love to see the work we do in the community. And I believe that was it. Thank you, I got my notes all mixed up here. I conclude this my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. That brings us to the second public comment period. If you didn't get a chance in the first period, or if you want to come up with a second period.
John McGinley, NSPA president. Just for clarification, like to know where specifically at the high school tomorrow's facilities meeting is?
That meeting will be right at the main entrance, the small room off to the right-hand side as you enter the building. Glass walls, can't miss it.
Danielle Miller Foster, bus driver, Nishamani, live in Langhorne. I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of information. I have a family member who's recently come up for training to become a driver, because we desperately need them, as you all know by this point. This was in September. She did her 20 hours of classroom time. She works a full-time job while trying to do this. On Election Day last week was the first time that someone from STA has contacted her to see how things were going. She has no idea what she's doing. She went through the classroom time. She still needs other training, in-bus training, needs to know how she's supposed to get her... So she was basically thinking that everything that she was learning under the hood, everything was on the written test, because no one explained that to her. So she's taking all this stuff online while she's in between work, trying to pass this and be confident enough to go, and no one's helping her. So as desperate that we are to need drivers, and this is how it's being handled, that's one person. Could be others, I don't know. But this is my family, and I'm the one that told her, "Come get a job. It'll be great. You can bring your son, he's a Nishamani student, and still do your aiding in between." And she's not really getting any help. So I don't know if you guys can get a grip on that and find out what's going on with the training situation, because it's not cutting it, and we need help. Because we are constantly getting bashed on social media, and as a driver of 19 years, it's very disheartening to sit here because there's nothing that we can do, and we're doing the best that we can. And it's really unfair to us, and it's hard to read and deal with. So whatever you guys can do to help in that situation would be great. I'll give you her name, her information.
Can you email us her information soon?
Yes, yes.
Or after the meeting, yeah. Okay.
Anyone else? That brings us to the board comment period. Anybody have any comments?
Yeah, it was mentioned briefly, but I thought it was well-deserving that the Nishamani marching band had their big competition in Hershey this past weekend, and they got first place. I was hearing all about how the competition is really fierce this year. They end up with a 90.2, I think? 90.4, thank you. Always good to have an accountant on the board. So 90.4, they completely rocked it, they should all be real happy. As a band parent, I mean, those guys work really, really hard, and so that's just a feather in the cap. And then just lastly, Mr. Allen mentioned the, at Bucks County Technical High School, the summer exploratory program. I'll tell you, my sons were all beneficiaries of that program. They went through it, and they learned a lot. It's really neat, for three weeks, you can... If your child doesn't know what they want to do, you have three weeks to kind of figure out. There are different classes, the culinary class, there's a baking class, there's, I think, one of my kids had an electronics class. It was fantastic, they all had a great time. So they do great work at the tech high school, so if you can take advantage of it, and you have kids in middle school, definitely something worthwhile over the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I want to say thank you to our presenters from Carl Sandberg Middle School on the Canvas program. You know, being one of the board members that was here when we first talked about expanding the technology in our classrooms, and really laying out a roadmap to how this is going to go forward. We all, you know, wanted to get it started, and we all had big hopes and dreams of how this would progress, and I'm really, really, really happy as to how it's moved along. I always said, you know, none of these programs would stay static, we would always remain dynamic in how we would approach this. You know, we set up a program when we first came in, and we thought that was, you know, the way to go. Changed leadership, and they brought a different idea, and they said, "Let's go in this direction, let's see what this yields." And we went in their direction, which I'll say again, is the way I wanted to go in the first place, but that's a different story. But, you know, it's really allowed us to expand, the teachers have really bought into it, the students have really bought into it. You know, Mr. Sullivan and I were asking young Nick about how's he using it, and we're purposely asking him about, "Well, what about your textbook? And what about your textbook?" And he's like, "No, no, I do it on this, and I can do this, and I can do this, and I can do this." And, you know, not that, you know, technology's the end-all, you know? We still need great teachers in front of the classroom, we still need parents that are engaged with their kids to make them take advantage of this, but just to see how this generation responds to this technology and how they're using it, it's just a great thing to see, and, like I said, far beyond where I thought it would ever go. So thanks to all our administration that's worked so hard, our teachers that have bought in, and really are making this part of the way the curriculum's going to be addressed, and as explained, you know, this is what colleges are using for those children that are going on to college, and even the children that are going into the real world right after high school. Everything today, you know, requires some type of technology, whatever you're doing, and just giving them a leg up on moving forward is a great thing. Mrs. Brown, about the bus. Don, are you prepared to expand a little bit on what we're doing with the communication package? We talked about it last week a little bit. Could you expand on that a little bit, please?
We did. We did. Thank you, Mr. Irwin. And, um, you know, Mr. Warren made some comments, you know, I'm a product of the Philly school system. That explains, yes, yes, that's, that's, um, as, as is Mr. Feather, and I know some others of us, but, um, it is a different world today. Uh, you know, where I work is in close proximity to a couple Philly schools, and, and I'm sure they're doing the best they can under, under very different, different circumstances. Their population's exploding, their tax base is shrinking, um, their work environment isn't good. Yes, we should be grateful for what we're doing here, that doesn't mean we stop doing what we're doing. It means, you know, there's always the opportunity to always look back, stay dynamic, change when we think change is warranted, stay the same when we think things should stay the same. Um, but, you know, um, you know, I'm lucky, my children were able to have this experience, and I hope we can keep providing the same, and that doesn't mean we forget about children somewhere else that don't have this type of opportunity that we're able to have here. Children everywhere deserve, deserve to have an environment which they can, they can grow in, and we can only hope the situation down there gets better, but that is very disheartening to hear. I, I seen some of that, I know exactly what you're referring to, and, you know, it's a shame, but I'm, I'm sure it doesn't exist in every, every school, you know, down there. Other than that, um, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Um, I wanted to add to a little bit about what Mr. Piratano said about our, the Canvas, that was a fantastic presentation by our students here. Also, having sat on this board when we first talked about bringing that technology into the classroom, and, you know, we had vague ideas what it would look like, but to see it come to fruition, and, and more importantly, to, to see the kids really take to it. And, and again, I, I, we also, Tina and I, were asking about the textbooks, and they're like, "Well, well, yeah, we, they're, we use them, you know, they kind of refer us back to, but, you know, we can do it here." Like, so, just to see that reaction, and, and I, and I kept asking, I said, "And you use this, and you like this," and gray days all the way around, so that's great to hear. I also want to bring up the kaleidoscope of bands that I attended for the first time, and I wish I'd attended others. I was blown away by the performances, and, you know, we have a couple band parents here who walked me through the ceremony, and Dr. McGee showed me the best place to see the finale, and I, I just, you know, just fantastic. And I have relatives who play in bands in Truman who, you know, look forward to this event. That's nice to know, you know, that, the Nishamney, they love coming to this event and to show off, you know, what their band does. And, anyway, I thoroughly enjoyed that, even with the rain. And, and I thought our band members were troopers, because, again, as the host band, they waited it out till all the other bands marched out, and not a word or complaint. So that was great to see. Again, one of my other favorite events, the Veterans Day celebration at Maple Point that I was able to attend yet again. Fantastic job, as always, by the Maple Point crew. And, again, I just, it, to be a fly on a wall, to sit back and try to be nondescript, and, and watch the, the students interact with the veterans, and that is what I thoroughly enjoy about it, because, you know, they're a little timid first, they ask a few questions, and the veterans just open up to them, and I just love seeing that reaction. And the, the presentation, the choir, everything, especially they do all the military themes, love that. So, again, great job by the Maple Point. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to piggyback a little bit on the Canvas issue too, not, I shouldn't say issue, but as a, you know, as a person that spent thirty-five years in a classroom and, and retired, just as all this technology was coming in, I, I just have to say how impressed I am with, with our teachers, and how quickly and seemingly seamlessly have, have, you know, adapted this new technology, and, and I had the opportunity to visit some classrooms, and it was being used extensively in the classroom and out, and, so I just, I just want to make, make it known that change is not easy, especially for teachers who have been around for a number of years, and I applaud them, all of them, so, thanks.
Okay, I guess that comes to me then. Uh, yeah, I thought the Canvas presentation was very, very neat. I, I actually do have a couple Canvas users in my house, and my only negative with Canvas is when I trip over the computer in the morning when it's still charging in the living room, but otherwise, I think it's a great, it's a great thing. Ms. Pollak, we heard what you said about people leaving the district, and hopefully some of those issues will be able to be addressed in the upcoming negotiations, and hopefully we can get to a settlement. And finally, uh, we would like to congratulate our solicitor, Mr. Torrentini's wife, who just recently had a baby boy, so congratulations. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second? Second, Mr. Kovacs? All in favor? Aye. I ain't gonna ask. Motion adjourned. Meeting.[1131.65]